If you could, could you display that on the screen? I did not print enough for everybody.
You might need to be up there and point at it. So, because that is not that clear.
Is the mayor's okay with it?
Sure.
So, as you'll see here, clearly read the areas that we will not allow this already, without any hesitation or exception. The entire courthouse lawn would be off limits. The library, off limits. The Boone County Assessor's Office, off limits. Now, the district, you'll see the green line stretches from Marie's at the Seville, Stevenson Avenue, and then the surrounding businesses around the square. I intentionally kept the courthouse lawn off of this proposal because the intent is not to create a party zone, a congregation zone, a tailgate zone, anything like that. You know, the only intent is to encourage individuals from the ages of 21 to 40 years old, that's kind of my target audience for this proposal, encourage them to come down and support the shops in our downtown. I polled the shops in the downtown. Of the 41, I was able to reach within this area that you see right there, and it's kind of surprising that we have that many concentrated in that one small area. I had 39 total yes supports, and I had two opposition. Now, I know that there's probably going to be some more opposition, and there will be more supporters, but you know, I just didn't have time to get to all of them. However, I want to concentrate on the 39 number. It's pretty substantial. When you can get 39 stores downtown working together for one cause, if you've been around the downtown area for an extended period of time, you understand that they don't always agree on everything, but this is a powerful message that they agree on. So, the hours is the next thing I wanted to discuss. I'd be looking at Monday through Saturday, noon until 10:00 p.m. Sunday will still be off limits, and you're legal to have this on Sunday. And the hours of operation being noon until 10:00 p.m., we could extend it to midnight, but once again, the idea is to encourage social activity and not a party scene, not a, you know, a big bar hopping scene or anything like that that you might, some might be led to believe. So, at 10:00 p.m., it would close down. So, that's the proposal. I'll tell you a couple of success stories. You're not a stranger to the whole COVID pandemic and the effect that it's had on small businesses. Little Rock was able to utilize outdoor seating space, which enabled some of their restaurants to open up. Other, you know, if they, had they not had that outdoor opportunity for seating, they wouldn't have been able to open their doors because their indoor capacity wasn't great enough to support operating their business. Another good success story is our neighbor over in Mountain Home. Obviously, they're a different community, but they also try to do some of the things that we do. They successfully passed this in their community and now have a microbrewery that is established there within the district. That likely would have never come had the district not been established. So, it's twofold, you know, bring more people downtown and then try to encourage business growth downtown. So, there's going to be a slew of questions. That's it in a nutshell. As you can see in the act in front of you, this is a council approval, not a citizen vote. You know, it's very much, you know, within your power to pass this on and create the ordinance. That's it. I'm short on time.
All right, thank you. Thank you. You might stick around, I'm sure there will be some questions.
I'm not going to leave because I'm ready for questions.
We, I know we have a lot of people here, and many of you might want to talk on it tonight. I'm sure we have to limit that somewhat, but if you would like to come up and state your name.
I didn't, I forgot to tell you why I had this fancy cup. This would be the beverage or the container that would be allowed to walk from store to store in your downtown.
Okay. Chrissy, would you like to introduce someone to?
I will, I'll let the night kids just take it over from here.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Tyler Madison.
We need the Ignite Tower point up there, too.
Okay, Jeff? Yeah, and if you would, I think he wants you to be by the microphone over there. That'll at least go out.
Okay. This is Brianna Sedgefield and Hannah Roberts. They have some papers they're going to pass out for you. So, on these papers, it's actually from the Citizens Toolkit, and they highlight some major problems that have come about with entertainment districts. So, we're here to oppose the entertainment district in the Arkansas Senate Bill 492. It's passed in Arkansas, and we're trying to pass it here. We can continue to the next slide. I just said that's the next one, please. Thank you. So, some cons of the entertainment district is we'll get a negative reputation. We don't want to be known in Harrison for public drinking. It has poor influence on the youth. It's a risk to alcoholics and recovering alcoholics. So, we went around to the shop owners actually on the square around the courthouse lawn, and one of them told us about how they were nervous. They knew recovering alcoholics that this would pose a threat to. It would make access to it easier. It's increased crime rates, increased spending, increased accidents, increased violence. It interrupts the family events held on the square. Farmer markets, crawdad days. It's widely disapproved of by store owners and citizens, the ones that we spoke to. It's hard to enforce. It's not necessary, and Harrison doesn't have the right liquor stores to keep this up in the right ways. It doesn't have enough. So, in the Citizens Toolkit, one of the highlighted problems was that it's difficult to find any entertainment district that allows public drinking that has not experienced problems with criminal activity associated with public junkness. Problem number two is public safety. It's teenagers have greater access to alcohol that is consumed by adults on the street than if consumed in a place where their ages can be verified. While many entertainment districts require the alcohol be purchased in the district, there is no practical way to keep people from bringing alcohol into the district. Entertainment districts sometimes turn into parts of the town where many local residents won't go because these areas attract revelers from outside the town who go there to drink and party. Entertainment districts generate crowds, traffic, litter, and noise. In some communities, the smell of spilled alcohol, vomit, and discarded food becomes a problem. It has a proximity to parks, playgrounds, churches, daycares, public libraries, and homeless shelters. The cities often do not consider the work and cost involved in keeping entertainment districts clean and sanitary, and patrons often leave piles of litter like plastic cups and other trash. Sanitation workers have to deal with vomit and human excrement in and around entertainment districts. And on the next slide, we have some interviews actually from the shop owners talking about what they say. In Springdale, which they had an entertainment district, and I think it's very famous Dixon Street is the name of it. These are problems associated with Dixon Street. So, the crime rate in Springdale, Arkansas in 2018 was 38.13% per 1,000 people. Now, the crime rate in Springdale, Arkansas is 83% per 1,000 people. This went up 44.87% per 1,000 people. And then the next slide has interviews.
Okay.
Okay. So, I won't read them off. It's a lot there, and you probably don't want to hear all of it, but they all mentioned about the same thing. We asked them all the same questions, and they all said that they didn't think it was a good idea. They did think it would pose a threat to public safety, and they thought that it would be a threat to our youth. Then the next slide has more interviews, and then the next slide is a couple quotes that we want to read to you, actually provided by Chrissy that she wanted us to read, and she said, "It's easier to build strong children than to repair broken men," that's by Mark Twain, "and it's easier to defend cities than to reclaim them," by Mark Twain. I also have a statement for Matt Bell. Who needs to start drinking at noon? So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Regardless, that was a great presentation. I mean, you had, you had facts and comments and things of that nature. Would you like to respond, or?
Yeah, absolutely. Just to be clear, some people do like to have a beverage with their meal, lunch, answer your question, but very great question, and props to you guys for getting out and involved. Whenever I was asking the business owners, they told me that you came by, and I said, "That's great, kids involved in our downtown." You know, I support that whole lead. However, I will tell you this, there's two different containers that you'll see walking around downtown. You'll see this one, or you'll see this one. The one you see right now is this one, correct? What's inside of that? Can anybody tell me in this room? Can anybody tell me what's in that drink or that cup? Nobody can. This is much safer than allowing this, and to further that, alcohol is being sold at Dollar General on the northwest corner of the square right now. A six-pack is $6. So, if youth were to pay somebody to go buy them alcohol, would the person be more likely to go into Dollar General and get a six-pack for $6, or go into a restaurant and pay $6 for a cup of beer? So, I'm not increasing the access to alcohol for our youth. No ifs, ands, or buts, it is not increasing the access to it. The access to alcohol is already there. When we went wet as a county several years ago, these topics came up. The citizens spoke. It was very clear at the end of the day how the citizens of our community, of our county county, voted and went wet. Okay? So, a lot of the questions that are posed there are referencing wet or dry, not social districts, entertainment districts, and what this would allow for. So, that's my response there.
Thank you.
But good job.
All right. Anybody else want to speak, or? We have a store owner who just came up to the mic.
Hi. Can y'all hear me with this thing on?
No. Take it off.
He can't hear you.
Can't hear anyway, is that what he does? Thank you. I'm Jean Cochran. I'm the owner of the poorhouse on the square here in Harrison. I think, wherever y'all went, I lost you. Yes, I think for your report, there's a couple of things that I personally do not agree with. I moved here from a community in Texas that was very, very similar to Harrison. It had a dead square, nothing really happening. City council stepped up and decided they were going to help those businesses, and they voted in an entertainment district. That square is totally full. Six new restaurants have come in. All the buildings are full, and they now have very high-end apartments above every building. We need to look at the future with Dogpatch, something happening in Dogpatch. If we don't get something going in our square to where it's totally finished, totally viable, then the people are going to leave Dogpatch, and they're going to go to Jasper. The entertainment district was a big, big plus for the community that I came from. I am not for people being drunk, walking around the square. I don't know. Y'all haven't been in my coffee shop, but we don't have drunks, and they don't come in. It's not the clientele we have. I just think that, like Matt said, a microbrewery went to Mountain Home. It's bringing in businesses. It's bringing in money. It's bringing in tax dollars, and that's what we need. And as a council, I just implore you to look at 39 businesses that want the entertainment district, and voting for your constituents, that's the area that's marked off, and all of those people want it. You need to really look at what we're asking for. Thank you.
Thank you. Folks, I apologize for this, what I'm doing up here. There's a lot of people on Facebook wanting to watch us tonight, and it's not picking up.
It's back.
It's back, but I'm told no sound. Yeah, I know. So, that's, that's my reason behind this. All right. Rick?
I own three pieces of property down here on this square. Don't really have a dog in the fight one way or the other, but I listened to my wife, which is one of the people that got interviewed by the Ignite Group, and some of the information was very misleading. Number two, you stated that farmer's market. Farmer's market is over at noon. They don't hang around. You said crawdad days. They're at fairgrounds now. The only event that we really have on the square now is Harvest Homecoming, but here's the key factor, you cannot drink on the courthouse lawn. So, anybody that steps on that curb, walks around with a drink, can be arrested for being on there. What this is, is our economy downtown is fragile. We're losing a lot. When this moves, when the fire department moves, police station moves, the flow in this town slows down. The water department, are they moving too?
Uh, sure.
Okay. When the water department moves, you know how many people drives down through the downtown square to come pay the water bill? So, at this point, we need to generate any possible. Now, as far as people walking around and getting drunk and going from place to place, they're not the people going in and paying $6 for a drink. Right now, we already have homeless people. We've got people that go around. I clean up around that van stand all the time, and there's beer cans, whatnot all. That's nothing to do with what we're doing. That's down there already. Will be down there as long as we go. But once again, I know I have a dog in the fight. My building, they're not coming into with a beer. I will not be selling a beer, but I will sell you Harrison's future. We have to step up and hurt times. So, on this issue, religious to economics to everything, when it's all down, the survival of our downtown square. If you go south of Little Rock, all these squares like this are boarded up. We're all fighting as business owners. I've got a very big financial stake in the downtown square surviving. It doesn't mean alcohol, but we'd like to see more restaurants, more people come in, more tourism, and have a place to come to Harrison. Right now, we got Walmart. You can walk around and socialize and all that. We got to keep the downtown viable, but it's.
Thank you. Thank you, Rick. Bill?
Just a couple of questions. One from Matt, really one for you, Mayor.
Sure.
Matt, in regards to sales of alcohol downtown, and I've got to be honest, it's kind of difficult for me to go from the poorhouse to Marie's to Dollar General, thinking about carrying a cup in the first place, let alone trying to drink. So, I'm just trying to get in my mind, how many, how many businesses down there currently sell alcohol?
Oh, yeah, so I'll get over here to the microphone. I think that was seven. I need to stand over here.
How many businesses down there currently sell alcohol?
So, currently, we have Marie's at the Seville. We have the Lyric Theater. We have the poorhouse. Dollar General sells canned beverages, that's, you know, packaged beverages. It's not going to be the same as what we're proposing. We have another restaurant that has already said that they will be applying for a permit, and then there's another one that's actively construction, in construction of a property that will also be applying for a permit.
Okay. So, in your glass, is it going to be beer or mixed drinks?
It'll be beer or wine is my, what we're doing with it. No hard liquor. That would be quite the size, hard liquor. It'd be a big boy. Once again, the idea here is you purchase the beverage at, say, the poorhouse, and thank you, Jean, for showing up, and Rick for showing up. You know, I'll step back for a second. There were 39 businesses that supported it, and you might ask why only two of them showed up, because they're there every day, every night, and some of them are still working in their shop right now, and that's why they can't be here. So, they asked me to be their voice. So, that's what, that's why you only have two of them, and you have 40 in opposition. It's really simple. They're still at work, still doing their daily grinding. If they're not, they're finally relaxing after a long day of work at their own shop. But going back to the beverage, you know, the, I've lost track because I went on a tantrum, but anyway, the cups will, the idea is to go from the poorhouse and then go into frenzy and shop, not just to hang out at the poorhouse for an hour or two. You know how many beverages you can consume in an hour's time if you're sitting at the same location and just drinking? Now, obviously, Jean and her team, they know what they're supposed to look for. Don't let them overconsume. Don't over-serve, and they'll take care of that. But what I'm referencing is if somebody has a cup of beer, and then they walk the entire block, they're not likely to just dead sprint it back to the poorhouse to get another beer once it's empty. So, I don't think overconsumption is going to be an issue as long as it's monitored by those 39 businesses that are supporting, supporting this. They know what to look for.
Okay. So, you're telling me that a non-alcoholic sales business, they use Frenzy's or what's the name, Lux?
Lux Unrushed. Both are supporters of this.
Furniture stores?
Yes.
That they're going to want to have people come in their business with a cup full of beer?
Yes. So, the vast majority, like I said, Boz is, 39 out of 41 that I spoke with, supported it, and they're okay with them coming in. And there's a really simple concept, they may stay a little bit longer. They may spend a little bit more.
Hmm. I'm surprised, because I'm, I'm very surprised because in most retail establishments I've been in, where they sell things like clothes, they don't want you in there in the first place with anything that's liquid because they don't want to get spilled on.
Sure. And that's the risk that the business owner, it's not my place to make that decision for the business owner. I would say it would be the business owner. So, frenzy, and you know, another thing I didn't note is only businesses participating will have the decal in their window so that when somebody's coming through and they've got their cup, if they don't have the decal in their window for the entertainment district, that business is off limits, and thus a citation for an open container could be issued.
Is this like an armband knife, except it's a cup knife?
It could be.
I'm asking questions.
Could be. I think armbands, a little bit different animal, but yeah, it's, it, yes, I guess simply put, it could be comparable.
Okay.
But the cup is the distinguishing band, I guess.
Okay.
And the cup can only be acquired at a business in the district, and once that cup leaves the poorhouse or Marie's, that cup can't come back in. So, they can't just come back and get refills in the same cup, or come back in with something that may be mixed, or you know, so there's no reentry with the same cup.
We just got a comment from Facebook that I'd like to share with you all. It's from a lady that says, "As a business owner that is looking to move to the square, I support this. We are open later hours, and our customers would absolutely love it." Facebook comment.
What's our law enforcement say? Our law enforcement?
Let's ask you. Chief Grady?
I'm here.
What do you say, Chris?
There's actually a statute that allows for an entertainment district on the books, a state statute that allows for this activity to go on. It's like Matt said, the other state statutes still apply. If you're after disorderly, somebody's out of control, we're still going to go in and make an arrest as long as they stay within the area that's mapped out, and they carry the beer or wine in the cup, it will be legal. It will not be legal for someone to walk around with a beer in their hand or a wine cup.
You're going to have a hard time convincing me that somebody that's got a beer in their hand is not going to walk into the park. I'm talking about the courthouse square.
Yeah, so there'd be signage placed?
Again, Matt, you're still going to have a hard time. You can, I mean, I'm sorry, but this is what, think of, no, think of it like this, okay? You have a beer in your hand, and I'm not, I, really, I'm not against it. Really, I don't have a problem with the entertainment district. I think some of the logistics of it doesn't make sense, but you have a cup in your hand, and you look across the street, what do you see over there?
A bench.
A bench? How many? Two gazebos? What are you going to do?
So, I'm not.
No, no, Matt, what are you going to do?
That's illegal. So, they would be cited.
You didn't answer my question. What are they going to do?
What are the, what's the person with the beverage going to do? I'm responsible. I'm going to go back into the district that I'm supposed to be.
You got, you got.
It's really simple. If you're responsible.
You had a different psychology teacher than I did.
If you're responsible, you know, and I think that the merchants will help police this, too. They're supporting it.
That's a tough seller.
The, well, here, I'll pose, let me flip the question. What's to prevent somebody from taking a can of beer from Dollar General to the courthouse lawn today?
Nothing.
It happens.
What's the difference of them having a cup from the poorhouse to walk across?
At least you know what's in that cup. At least you know what's in that cup.
At least I know what's in a can of beers, don't you?
No, but you clearly know, the can of beer's not walking over there. It's in the mug next to it, the one that's, that you can't see the contents of. But you'll know with that clear cup what's going over there, and if it enters the courthouse lawn, where there will be clear signage, then it's off limits, posted at every location that participates in the, in the entertainment district. There'll also be, you know, I already said, the emblems in the doors. Once again, this is not a congregation area. This is not a party zone. It's not a drop-your-tailgate, flip the cooler open and, and you know, hang out. It's have a cup of beer while you go into our downtown merchants, and I want this for our downtown merchants because I see how much they're putting into our downtown. Have you seen the investments that have been, that have taken place during the pandemic in our downtown? It's phenomenal. I would like to err on the side of, of supporting those that are actually doing the work in our downtown, and that's the 39 businesses that I stand before you representing today.
I have one more comment. Let the business owners sign a petition, get majority vote from those that would be affected. Business owners can place signs of prevention at those locations that would rather refuse alcohol on their premises. Anything else, Bill?
Nothing.
Okay. Good. Thank you. I think, Joel, do you want to proceed with a, going to move it on, or?
Mayor?
Yes. Excuse me. We have another. Don West. Come on up, Don.
Well, I'm sorry I missed out on some of the comments. I'm very hard of hearing, and I tell people two things, I'm hard of hearing, so show me your lips. Unfortunately, under the conditions that we are operating under, that's kind of hard to do. And then the other one is, I'm hard of hearing, so I have to do all the talking. So, I'm going to try and seize the second opportunity here and just give a few thoughts here. I noticed we're talking about an entertainment district, and darned, I haven't heard anything about entertainment. Just really not any mention, there's not any mention of entertainment unless, because it immediately grafted to the issue of alcoholic beverages and everything, and apparently it's just going to be beer and wine. Is that correct? Okay. So, is there any entertainment, or is the entertainment really the alcohol? That's, that's, that's a big issue. Is the, is the entertainment district for the purpose of merchandising alcohol?
Matt?
That's a question that kind of comes to mind, and I know that we've had maybe two individuals of 39 who have appeared here tonight in support of this, but, and then of course for Matt's statements with respect to others, but I do find it interesting that only two have taken the time to speak. I heard you say that they're out there working right now and everything, but if this is of such a monumental importance, it would appear that they ought to be here, that they would want to make their voices heard clearly and in large volume. We have a. We haven't seen that. The cost, I, I, one thing that popped up, Matt was talking about signage. Who's going to pay for the signage? Is, are the businesses going to pay for the signage? What about in the evening, we're going from noon till 10? What about law enforcement for this area? Is this expect, are the business owners expecting the community to handle the law enforcement if there's need in it?